We seek blessings on this task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Chick.
Here.
Otto.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Chockley.
Here.
Zellina.
Present.
Dockett.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum, and we have lots of members of the public at our Road Commission. Thank you for coming. I'd like a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as distributed.
I support.
Pardon?
We need to add one.
Are we adding something?
We do need to add an agenda item in regards to the specialty designated distributor license.
Oh, just to get a-
We wanted to give everybody an update on it.
I thought it could be under correspondence, but that's fine. We can add it as number three.
Okay.
Okay, under the discussion?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we're adding the SDD liquor license attorney-client privileged letter that we got recently.
Liquor license.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's number three under discussion items. Any other additions to the agenda? Okay, thank you. So a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended.
I support.
Chockley motioned, Chick supported. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, thank you. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public, and I know a lot of you have come out tonight, and feel free to come up and speak to us. Three minutes, try to keep it to three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and share with us anything that's on your mind. Thank you. I don't know. Pull it out and put it up to your, and turn it on and put it really close to your mouth so we can hear you well.
How's that? Can you hear me?
It's good, yes.
Very good. Okay, I'm Randy Rush, 9672 Main Street. I know you're considering the Special Assessment District for weed control tonight, and I'm just here to encourage you to approve that or do whatever you do, need to do to keep it rolling. We've been beneficiaries of the weed control for many years and really appreciate the efforts of all that are involved in that, so I don't need three minutes to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Hi, Tom Bobbene, 9488 Main Street.
Tom, what's your last name again?
Bobbene, B-O-B-I-N-Y.
Bobbene, okay.
My daughter Rachel, and I have my own business, and I always bring the junior vice president with me. They'll learn about the, we just sold a big condo in Ann Arbor and moved out to the lake for the summer.
Okay.
So I just want to introduce her to staff, say thanks for the job, and we'll get involved in some volunteer activity at some point, so.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
All right.
Welcome.
Join Kiwanis.
Okay.
We'll get into Kiwanis. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Good evening.
Good evening. Polly McNichols, 7024 Dollar.
Hi.
I actually don't really have anything to say. I have questions. Whether you can answer them or not, I don't know, but the Road Commission may be able to. Can you hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
As far as chloride treatments, how many treatments per year do our roads get?
Okay.
Is this something you can answer right away?
I think it's two, but we'll, we'll have the Road Commission-
I think we pay for two.
I'm sorry?
I think we pay for two.
And that's my understanding.
Is it the same for all roads?
Yeah.
Is that a yes?
I think so.
I think it's township-wide we do that.
We do that, yeah.
Are there measurables as far as rate?
Okay, can, can I make a list of your questions so that Mr.-
Yes, please.
Okay, well, let's do that.
I'm giving you time to write.
And then Mr. Townsend can answer those things.
And maybe they can.
Okay.
Okay. What rate is it applied?
Okay.
And is traffic considered? When considering the rate and the number of applications? And is dust considered? And whether the road is limestone or regular old-timey gravel?
Okay.
And if it gets really bad, how would residents on a road get more treatments? And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight and commenting, and I'm sure we'll be able to get some answers for some of these questions. Do we have any board member comments at this time? Ms. Bellinger.
Yeah, I got a few. Too bad that Rachel and Todd left, because we just put up the volunteer page at the Northfield Township main webpage there. It's TWP-Northfield.org under Community, then it's on the bottom under Community as a volunteer. And this is a good place for people to sign up if you want to do, get engaged with some parks, activities and things, and just various volunteer work in the community. Another thing I want to mention, a couple things, Parks and Rec thing, is Community Garden, the Parks and Rec for the 2017 season has decided that residents take precedence in obtaining a garden plot at the community park, because we had some inquiries from people out of the township that were curious about getting a, one of those garden, park, garden planter things they have there. So the board decided that $25 per available plot, first come, first served, if there's any leftover after the residents have chose what they want. So that's to mention. Also, the, somebody's going to offer us some oak trees. I believe this has something to do with Arbor Day, maybe? So if anybody would like some oak tree saplings, please contact the township, and I believe they're going to be available after this Friday. And they'll be refrigerated, I guess only about a foot, foot long or so, and I guess you plant them quickly and everything should be fine. Regarding the correspondence, I've been receiving a couple correspondence from Carol Short, and she mentions her and her neighbors are in search of some relief from excessive noise, some of which is occurring prior to 7:00 a.m., and with other industrial noise sound that is said to exceed the accepted decibel levels. This information's been shared with the board and evidently the code enforcement officer, and so that is, something is happening with regards to that. And I want to also mention, I went to a county commissioners' meeting this week, this last week, last Wednesday. They have another meeting on the May 3rd at 6:30 at 220 North Main Street, and this is for the Washtenaw County Commissioners Board. The last meeting I went to, I was a bit concerned. They want to spend $150,000 of taxpayer money to be applied towards, in a nutshell, actually, to be applied towards aiding illegal undocumented immigrants in ways to circumvent federal immigration law. It was seriously troubling to observe so many elected representatives that wished to place undocumented illegal aliens above the law and above the citizens. This was very disturbing. So you might be wanting, if you have an interest in anything that's going on with regards to keeping an eye on what your county commission's doing, and other, of course, you know, government agencies, it would be good to get involved and just see what's going on. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Dockett.
I, I am looking at the, we want the update data on the cost of the park on, by the post office, and on the update, it says Paul Burns' legal fee, property closing, to be updated. Well, when we got the first one, Paul Burns did not turn in a bill for that one, and now there's not one for this one. I'd like to know how many thousands of dollars the legal bills were to build to buy that property, and why it is not brought up to date on this after we ask about it, and also Tammy Monzel is not on here either, so I'm just wondering why.
Who, I didn't catch that last sentence, Mr.-
On the very bottom, there's nothing for the ribbon cutting either, the very last one.
Um... What's that?
What's that? Oh, it's over there.
Oh, okay.
This is Paul Burns on here.
It came out funny, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's my number one. My number two is, on the minutes last time, it's going to be coming up for the next meeting, I asked a question about why I could not get a paycheck and the other four, the other four trustees did, the other three, excuse me, and I, I haven't been able to get one in four months, so I, it says on here, it's a Dockett asked about payments of trustees. Well, that's not what I asked about at all. I asked about a paycheck. So when these minutes come up at the next meeting, I would hope that this is corrected to say what I asked. Next thing, this is the end, the last one, is I've been waiting since Good Friday, it was being 10, 11, 12 days ago, I called Kathy Manning about a, to get an appointment with her to talk to her, and she's not called me back, and her deputy told me I would be getting paid with a $10.99, and now the supervisor told me yesterday that, no, the legal, the legal attorney said that they can't pay me. So that's another question I have, and why I could not get to see. I tried to talk to the deputy, she said she's not going to talk to me, that I should talk to Kathy, and Kathy won't call me back, set up an appointment. Thank you.
Ms. Manley.
Just to, I guess, follow up with Wayne, I apologize if I haven't received a phone call from you, and the payroll system here works, and we can go into this further, you know, later on. You either get direct deposit or a pay card. Wayne has chosen to do neither of those, therefore, he hasn't been paid, so.
I was told I'd be paid with a $10.99 by your deputy.
We've speak, we're speaking with our labor attorney on that, and we'll have something for you.
Excuse me.
We are talking to our attorney on that, and we'll have something in the next couple days.
Thank you.
Ms. Otto.
So, well, I guess I'm just going to leave it for the labor attorney to address it then.
Right. At our next meeting, we'll have another special meeting, probably 6:30, potentially 6:15, so that'll be on May 9th, and we will be having our labor attorney here for that meeting. So we can add, we can get some of those questions answered, and we'll have something in writing. So, Mr. Main.
Supervisor, Mr. Dockett, our office billed for eight hours in connection with the closing on the Van Curler property, which at the township rate of $150 an hour, I believe, is $1,200. We got a call about it on Packet Day, and our billing secretary wasn't in at the time, so we weren't able to provide the information timely for the packet, but that's, that's what it was.
Has your total bill on everything there?
Yeah, my understanding, everything else was under the retainer. The only thing that-
Excuse me?
Everything else was under the retainer. The only work that we performed that wasn't, was the closing, because it was meeting and dealing with people outside of the township.
Okay, do we have, Ms. Zellner?
Just want to let, I heard today that our parking signs, the reserved parking for the residents will be, they have been delivered, so now we'll work to get them put in the ground. So we ordered three for people, we ordered three reserved parking signs during business hours for our residents, so when there are meetings here that don't pertain to the residents, that they'll be able to park and get their business done. So they're in, so now, oops, get them installed.
So everyone has had a chance. Is it really quick?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a mention, I wanted to thank, I believe, Mr. Gordon for the thoughtful, is it David Gordon, for the thoughtful die.
Okay.
Says, "Who, what, when, where, and why."
Okay.
It's a cute little thing. Thank you.
And, and I would like to mention that we're having an outbreak of some coughing disease with dogs in our dog park, so if you take your dogs to the dog park, don't use the, a community drinking bowl, because they've been getting this viral coughing, and so it's been causing some vet fees and things like that. So practice sanitary practices at the, at the dog park. Bring your own bowl for your own dog. It might help the situation. Okay, thank you. Can, I'd like to move on now to the presentation. We're fortunate tonight to have the Road Commission here to explain what they do for our township and how we can work together, and how the law is sort of a constraint for some of our, the things we'd like to get done, but we'll see what we can do together. Thank you. This is Mr. Roy Townsend.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Roy Townsend, managing director here at the Road Commission. Also here tonight with me are two of our commissioners, Bill McFarlane and Doug Fuller, Adam Leib, Assistant Superintendent, Mike Masti, our foreman for the area, and Jim Harmon, our Director of Operations. We have some brochures I'd like to hand to you guys, too.
This is our quarterly newsletter.
Take, take the microphone, okay.
That's our quarterly newsletter. We have some brochures about how to report a road issue. We started this new in October, where you can do it, you can put this app on your phone, and you can then, if there's a pothole or a concern, you can send it right directly to our, the Road Commission, and it'll go directly to the foreman, or you can do it online, or you can also call our number 761-1500. But this has just helped streamline it, and then you can track the pothole. We'll acknowledge when we received it, and then we'll send out a notice when it's fixed. So it becomes more of a two-way communications. The old way, you'd just call in, and eventually you'd get taken care of. This way, you can sort of track it. City of Ann Arbor's gone to this, City of Saline, City of Detroit, City of Ypsilanti, so it's a nationwide thing, so we signed up in October.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask if this applies to dirt roads, too? Because we've got some holes in our dirt roads that are as deep as basements.
Exactly, yeah, you can, you report potholes on gravel roads, paved roads, any roads. Basically, it's a service request, with, you know. Also, a couple of the brochures on round, on roundabouts, our construction season, winter maintenance, but we're done with winter maintenance, then also on unpaved gravel roads. So there's extras, you can just put them at the front desk or share them with the public, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd just like to walk through our packet, some of you have in front of you. Page one, just a letter to the board acknowledging there was, in 2015, there was a state legislative change where they did increase the amount of money towards roads for the gas tax increase from 19 cents to 26.3 cents, first time in 20 years. Diesel tax also increased, first time in 33 years. So, you know, people are like, "Oh, we're finally going to get a road fixed." Well, it's phased in over five years, and the situation we're in took about 15 years to get there, so we're not going to get out of it in two years, three years, maybe 10 years. And even MDOT's saying, "This money, the roads are still going to deteriorate, they're just going to deteriorate slower." So they really didn't put enough money into the solution, they just gave a little money to sort of fill part of the pothole, or not even filling all the pothole. But the good news is, at least there is some good, new money, so we're thankful for that. So the Road Commission, it's going to be about $4.2 million, so we are going to put some more money in the local matching program, which I'll get into a little later here. Page two is just sort of a summary of our budget. Our budget's, end of the day, is close to $50 million between federal funds, local funds, and different funds. Like I said, at the bottom of that page, we increased our matching program from $500,000 up to $700,000. And what does that mean for Northfield Township? Turn to page three. Last year on a conventional match, you used to get $25,000. Basically, with the new money, you're going to be up to about $34,000. And how that works is, this $34,000 is an incentive for the township to put in $34,000, hopefully more than that, but it's incentive to encourage you to put money in on road improvements, that could be gravel, limestone, resurfacing, those type of things. The drainage match did stay the same at $200,000, and that's for your township, it's nearly $14,000. That's to remove berm, do ditching, do drainage improvements on your roads, on basically your local gravel roads.
If I had a figure like $34,999, I'd say $35,000, not $34,000.
Yeah, okay, it's 35, I agree.
Make yourself look better.
It's about a $10,000 increase. Page four, I just point out on where you want to spend your matching dollars, we need that before May 19th. We meet with all 20 townships, we basically get those projects from all 20 townships, then we, you know, our crews are then assigned to do those projects. Last year, we did over 300 projects, between our projects and township projects, so that's why we need to know by May 19th, so we can prioritize, figure how much limestone, how many culverts, all those type of things. So that's what we need, to help, help us decide where we're going to put our resources based on what the townships' requests are. Next page, page five, is sort of a summary of activities from last year. We break down the projects into, or track it basic, two different ways. Primary roads, that's going to be like North Territoria, Whitmore Lake, the major roads. Primary roads are going to be the roads that really connect your townships to other townships and go into other counties, so that's like the main roads. Those primary roads are generally going to eventually get to a city, or they're going to get to a freeway, and you're going to take you places. We get 75% of our money from the state for maintaining those roads. Those are like the main roads in the township and in the county. Local roads, we get 25% of the pot, and that's going to be generally, local roads generally are going to keep you, take you within your township, like Nala Road and those type of roads. It's more local traffic, so it's more people that's going to be in your township. Some people obviously cut through on local roads, but you're going to get more traffic, obviously, in North Territoria and Whitmore Lake than you are going to get like in Nala. So tracking those, we track them in maintenance for roads, traffic. We project on Whitmore Lake, projects on Sutton, Whitmore Lake, a couple different areas, Chip Seal, then Pontiac Trail, Mill and Resurfacing. End of the day, we spent about $864,000 on the primary roads in Northfield Township last year. Local, single thing, we track winter traffic, and then we also partnered with you on dust control local roads, township-wide ditching, township-wide limestone. End of the day, we put about $48,000, $480,000 in the local roads. You guys put about $108,000 in the local roads. And on that, the next page, you guys have like 49 miles of local roads, so if you take, divide that 48, basically, you've spent about $10,000 per mile on your local gravel roads. We get about $2,000 per year for local roads. So we're spending a lot more, in this situation, nearly $8,000 more per year to maintain those local gravel roads. And what's really happening is we're taking that money from the primary roads. Some people say, "Why are the primary roads not in as good a condition as they should be?" Because we're really taking money, raiding money from the primary road pot, helps supplement the local road pot, because we realize the local roads are seriously underfunded in this state, and they will continue to be underfunded in this state. But I just wanted to point that out. Next one is dust control. And like I said, you guys have 49.6 miles. Last year, we did two solid applications. We do 2,000 gallons per mile, answer the question, how many gallons per mile? We do track that. So end of the day, you can see down at the bottom, for two solid applications for all the miles, it'd be 1,000, 198,000 gallons. Last year, we end up using a little bit less than that, so we do track, we bill the township on actually quantity used, so that is tracked per mile, per road. You guys pay for the brine, we pay for the grading, so you're just paying for the material that's put down, and we're paying for the grading. If someone wants to, you guys are paying for two, some townships pay for two, some township pays for three, but there is, we have a private order, so you can call Road Commission, 761-1500, and do a private order. We have quite a few people that do that. So let's say you're having a special event, birthday party, whatever type of event, you can order a special event and do a section of road that way. So we do have people call private orders. Obviously, you need to give us a little bit of lead time, that's on our website, or you can call us. I'm trying to remember the other questions on dust control and grading. The challenge, I mean, they talked about Nala Road. A road like Nala, we'll get into it later, but there's no real gravel or limestone on it, it's really a dirt road. This dust control brine doesn't work as well, because how it works is it usually soaks into a gravel or limestone, and it sits there in salt water, and when there's moisture in air, it's going to pull that moisture into the salt, the salt absorbs that, and how it works. But when it's really just dirt and clay, it doesn't work as well, because there's nothing to hold it there, the gravel's not there. So, so many of the roads in your township really don't have limestone or gravel on, so we'll grade them, and then they, you know, if you get a rain event, they're back to what they were. So yeah, there's a lot of the gravel roads in Northfield Township do have a lot of potholes. We're grading them, try to hold them together. End of the day, and we're talking to all the, all 20 townships, we need to come up with a township, a plan to figure out a way to fund these local roads, local gravel roads, and we'll get into that a little bit later in playing, because end of the day, if not, it's just like your gravel driveway. If you didn't put gravel on your gravel driveway for 30 years, what do you think it would look like? You wouldn't have any gravel there. That's what happens on a lot of these roads. So I don't know, Mike, you want to walk through some of the potential projects? And here again, we give you a list of projects, obviously, we know you're not going to spend, probably added all this up, probably a million dollars, but that's a list of projects that the township could do. Joy Road's another one, it's sort of like Dixboro Road. Ann Arbor Township's really interested in doing it, trying to partner, but I know money's tight, that's something Ann Arbor asks if they, we could talk, you know, because they'd like to figure out a way to eventually get Joy Road done, and if we can only do it at half-mile increments across, it would be a start. I'll be back, but go ahead. Mike, walk through the projects.
Hi, Mike Masti. I'd like to just briefly overview the projects. The first one on the list, Dixboro Five-Mile Road to Six-Mile is ditching berming, limestone. This is a shared, this would be a shared project with Salem Township. We have had their meeting, and this has been presented to them as well. Estimated project cost for Northfield Township for that section of road is $75,450. And then I'd like to overview all sections of Joy Road, from Dixboro all the way to Maple. They all include ditching berming, limestone. Some sections get more stone than others. The first section, Dixboro to Earhart, estimated cost is $69,700 for Northfield Township. Earhart Road, I'm sorry, Joy Road from Earhart Road to Pontiac Trail, estimated cost $52,950. Then we have Joy Road, Pontiac Trail to Nala, estimated cost of $94,100. Joy Road, Nala to Whitmore Lake, estimated project cost $77,350. We have Joy Road, Helena Road to Maple, estimated project cost of $70,050. And Joy Road from Whitmore Lake to Helena, estimated project cost of $98,250. We have Jennings Road, US 23 to End of Payment, to include ditching roadside berm removal, pulverizing the existing surface with three inches of asphalt, estimated project cost of $230,200 for that. Jennings Road from End of Payment to Carney Road, this includes berm removal, some tree cutting, reshaping the existing surface, eight inches of limestone, estimated project cost of $271,100. Jennings Road, Carney to the Township Line, same job scope, and estimated project cost Six-Mile Road, Earhart Road to Rushton, same job scope, with tree cutting, ditching, berm removal, six inches of limestone on that section, estimated project cost $147,100. We have Nala Road, Territorial South, .28 miles, same job scope, estimated project cost We have Nala Road from Northfield Church Road, north, one mile, same job scope with berm, tree removal, ditching, six inches of limestone, estimated project cost of $173,800. Same job scope with berm, tree removal, ditching, six inches of limestone, estimated project cost of a hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars. And we have Nala Road from Northfield Church Road to Joy, same job scope with eight inches of limestone, estimated project cost a hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred dollars. If there was any other project that you would like to see an estimate for that might have in mind, we can definitely put something together for you.
Did you just go around and survey all the dirt roads in the township and determine that these are the worst? Or how did you come up with these in particular?
These are some that we've presented in the past, and yes, some of them are the worst, some with more traffic than others.
Okay, so when they need eight inches, they're in really bad shape, and when they need four inches...
They need more fill, correct.
Right, it's, it's less of a problem, okay. We can't even, it's, our, our little bit is a drop in the bucket here. We can hardly do even a road.
We have no money.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
So we're doing the project, like Mike said, I mean, there's a ton of projects in here, we can, you know, other, add things to it.
Right, so I guess we've got a few more questions, I'm sorry, I didn't look over this direct, in this direction, so.
Is there any consideration to those roads, particularly our dirt roads now that are going to be carrying a lot more traffic because of all the construction over the next year? A lot of traffic's being detoured on to our dirt roads.
Well, that doesn't mean detoured, that people are using them as backroads. We've approached MDOT, there's really no way for federal funds to be put on those local gravel roads. We'll do the best we can to hold them together. But yeah, we face it, anytime there's a construction project, I mean, we, a couple of years ago, we had two projects, placed two bridges on Austin Road, west of Celine. We can do the best we can, but end of the day, you can't really prevent people from driving on roads, I mean, they have a right to, they're public roads.
I don't disagree, but I think preventive care is a good idea when you're trying to take care of the roads. With the additional traffic that is going to be coming down these side roads, they're going to take a lot more wear and tear.
No, I would agree, and that's why, we actually did ask MDOT, is there funds available? And they said no. Because last year, we had the same situation when they closed M fourteen north of Ann Arbor. There's a lot of people, I mean, they started up here and going the backways to get into Ann Arbor. And there really wasn't any way to put federal funds, which is funding US twenty-three, on your local roads.
Do we, do you have a lobby in, in Washington for road repair, or any, just, any of the road commissions in like, because...
We do have an association in Lansing. How effective, I wouldn't say it's real effective. End of the day, in the nation, in DC, Washington DC, we put, that gas tax hasn't changed since nineteen ninety-three. So think of what the prices were in nineteen ninety-three versus today. So was that twenty-four years ago? The federal government has no priority to put money into roads. And same with Lansing, there's no priority to put money in. You know, we raised our gas tax to twenty-six point three cents. Ohio's been at twenty-eight cents for decades. And we can't even catch up to Ohio, and that's finally going to phase in two thousand and twenty-one. So our roads are going to be crummy in Michigan for a while.
Well, I wasn't thinking about the gas tax, it was kind of frustrating the other day, and probably nothing we can do about it, but I thought, if there's some kind of lobby in Washington, people, I mean, everybody should be jumping on board. Toyota just got, or they just were awarded, the government, the federal government, two point five billion dollars from Toyota for problems that they had with their vehicles. So where is that money? Really, why aren't, why aren't we over there in Washington asking for that money?
Oh, we are. I, I mean, supposedly President Trump's talked about investing a trillion dollars in the infrastructure. We'll be right there, when there's, about six, seven years ago, maybe eight years ago, when there was stimulus dollars, we, we get, that's how we actually started improving North Territorial, was with those stimulus dollars. And we finally got it done two years ago, we're putting North Territorial back together again. It wasn't that long ago where we had people sending us petitions, five hundred people signing it, how bad North Territorial. So we finally did improve North Territorial. So this federal money will be, you know, we're very good, you know, if there's money, federal money available, finding and putting onto projects. But I'm not so sure. I've heard a lot of talk, you know, in Washington, but not a whole lot of real actions as far as road funding, infrastructure.
Ms. Otto, go ahead.
We also, on the previous board, had East Shore on that list, and I don't see it on the list this year.
Oh, they're doing it.
That is, you are getting that way, so we are doing East Shore this year.
Okay, good.
I'll get to that.
Okay, thank you.
And, next slide. So, okay.
Ms. Bellinger, go ahead. Yeah, I just want to maybe clarify, because I, because I'm new to this, I'm kind of understanding it. Trying to understand it. Okay, you said that the road commission has allocated seven hundred thousand for twenty seventeen, two hundred thousand more because of the extra taxes that have been generated and so forth. Now, now this seven hundred thousand, is that what we can apply to these projects as we mentioned? Was this listed, is that how this works?
Yeah, if you go back to that, page, what, two?
Okay. Page two.
We take seven, the seven hundred thousand, and then distribute it between all twenty townships, I guess on page three, based on population and local road miles. That's how we receive the money from the state. So that's why, you know, you guys receive more money than Sylvan or Linden, because you have more people, more road miles.
Okay, so, wait a minute, so please back up. Okay, the road commission has allocated a total of seven hundred, now is that for this township to match with?
No, seven hundred thousand countywide. Your share should be, and highlighted, the thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's this other page over here, the thirty-four nine nine nine.
On page three, yes.
Okay, so this is how much the county is willing to assist us?
Yeah, thirty-five thousand dollars for roads.
And that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
And the drainage match is another nearly fourteen thousand dollars.
All right, and then on this other page, you have these different projects that the gentleman just listed, that we could, we could go ahead and move forward with if we wish. But the, so the county's going to help with about almost fourteen thousand and thirty-five thousand. The rest comes out of our pockets.
Let's say fifty thousand, yeah, you know, forty, yeah.
Now, is that correct, is that, is that right? So, that's, what, where is, I mean, you don't, I don't imagine you know, but where is our tax money going? Where is our tax money going?
The gas tax money?
We got the state of Michigan here, I'm not talking about US, US doesn't charge us for roads, not, not like the state does. Where's this money going?
Every time you get a gallon of gas, it's nineteen cents, goes to the federal, goes to Washington DC, so they, they tax gas.
And Michigan just raised the gas tax.
There's a twenty-six cents, right.
And we, was it, how much, was it a half mil last year?
It was nineteen cents, went up to twenty-six cents, twenty-six point three.
But, you know, we pay all these taxes, you know, we pay out of the left pocket. It goes to the capital, wherever it's going. And then a little bit comes back, and now we're told we have to pay out of the right pocket now to get any road work done?
Right, but just for clarification, we invest the lowest amount of money per capita of any state in the country in roads. So you think we're paying a lot, but really, Ohio spends a billion dollars more per year on their same, they have the same road miles.
So you're saying they use their taxes perhaps better? It's not that we need to raise taxes.
What they have is higher gas tax, higher registration fees, they have toll roads.
Higher taxes is not the answer.
Okay.
Well, I'm just telling you, I'm just giving you facts, I'm just trying to give you facts.
We don't need to argue with Mr. Townsend, he's, he's...
He's just trying to help us out.
Yes.
He's just going to show us what's going on, I appreciate it.
Other states, how they've been successful. Ohio also, they have a sales tax, a lot of their town, counties have sales tax. They, you know, because end of the day, taking care of roads is expensive. You know, it's no doubt, and, you know, in Michigan, we've tried to get by on the cheap for decades, and look at where we are. It's like, oh yeah, it's, we don't have to pay as much in gas, we saved, you know, thirteen cents every time you fill up. What do we got, some of the worst roads in the country? I mean, that's what we, you know, you get, so you have to pay for. So like I said, roads are expensive, look at this project out here on twenty-three, a hundred and some million dollars to improve that section of road. And here again, they're not, they're widening it, but the old pavement, they're not even tearing out. And some of that pavement's, what, fifty years old, sixty years old, they're resurfacing it. That's not ideal. I mean, sixty-year-old pavement probably should be torn out, but let me try to get through some of the projects, and I can stick around and answer more questions.
Thanks a bunch, thank you. Do you want to ask questions after you get through the project?
Yeah, if that's, if that's okay.
Yeah, let's let him get through it.
The first pullout is a sort of list of projects that we're doing this year. And East Shore is on there. That was part of the countywide millage that was voted in, that was the number one priority from the previous board, the previous manager. So we are doing both sections, from Main Street to Seven Mile, from Seven Mile up to the county line. So that will happen later this summer. We're also doing a project on North Territorial, chip sealing, trying, like I said, we got North Territorial back together again. We're going to chip seal five miles every year, and so we'll keep it in good shape. So like the Mackinac Bridge, it's twenty-six miles long, if we do five miles every year, every five years, we'll be back and trying to keep that in good condition. Because we can chip seal at twenty-five thousand dollars a mile. If you let it go to disrepair, it's three hundred thousand dollars a mile. So it's just like sealing your deck. If you seal your deck, you keep up with that minimal cost versus waiting till the deck fails and replacing everything. That's the first pullout. Second pullout is from the millage. That basically shows, this was what the people voted on, and actually seventy-one percent of the people in Washington County supported this new pack, tax for roads. It was a half a mil. And you can see in Northfield Township each year, green is the first year, seeing, which is East Shore, North Territorial. Red's the next year, which is Seven Mile. Then we get another section of North Territorial, and then another section of Pontiac Trail in two thousand and twenty. So this is the money for primary roads that the county board allowed to be put on the ballot. And end of the day, seventy-one percent is pretty, is a high number, especially for our new millage, the people supported it. But I think people in Michigan are pretty frustrated with the roads and willing to spend more money. And actually, last year, ninety-five percent of the millages were passed in Michigan for roads, as far as millages that were on the ballot. Next page, next pullout is a map of all our Pacer evaluations. What those are, we go out and evaluate the roads every two years, and this is a federal aid system. A ten is a perfect road, so we finish a road, it's a ten for one year. Then it becomes a nine, and eight, seven, six, all the way down to, you know, a one and a two. So one through four is red, six, seven, or five and six and seven are yellow, and then good are the ten, nine, eight. And some of these, we can turn the page, zoom more in on Northfield Township. Looking at the map, some of the projects we did last year were done later in the year. Section in Whitmore Lake is actually not all red, because we did the work after the ratings were done early in the season. So actually, the roads are, the primary roads are in better condition than this map shows. The next one is the paved local roads or non-federal aid. For the most part, there are a lot of subdivision roads, and you see a lot of red and yellow on the subdivision roads. You do have this section of Six Mile that's paved, and a few other little pieces of roads that are paved. Sutton's actually a non-federal aid road, but it's a primary road, that's why that piece, but we actually did that last year, right, Sutton? So that's actually probably not red, I mean, that shows up red. The next slide, next um, pullout is sort of, we did it by pie charts on page fifteen. The far left column are the federal aid systems. And if we put in the roads that we actually, Whitmore Lake and those that we had done, you can, the green is actually, is improving. So, you know, here again, I said, we're not going to get there overnight, but the needle is, we have improved the road system compared to what it was five or six years ago. The next columns are the feder, the non-federal aid are the local roads. And for the most part, you know, the, the local roads, which are subdivision roads, and I'll get into how, how I'd recommend a township deal with those local subdivision roads. But for the most part, you can see you have no more good roads in the subdivisions, which is the far right. And right now, you're at seventy percent of the subdivision roads are in poor condition, and thirty percent are in fair condition. I mean, they're older subdivisions, you know, when you get fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old, they're starting to fail. It's like the roof on your house, it doesn't last forever, it needs to be replaced. So the next slot, thing to pull out is local funding options for townships. First, under Act fifty-one, which is in nineteen fifty-one, that's how the forum was established, is distribute money for the gas tax. That's when the gas tax was increased, nineteen fifty-one. And thirty-nine percent went to the road commissions, thirty-nine percent went to MDOT, twenty-two percent went to the cities and villages. In that act, for local roads, because they, local roads were under, under, in nineteen fifty-one, they're underfunded in two thousand and seventeen, township boards could levy up to three mills for local roads without a vote of the people. That's the statute that was in the law then, it's in there today. You can also levy up to six mills with a vote of the people. So that's the law that's in there, you know, there's tools available for the township. Townshipwide millages, that's another thing. In our county, we have four townships that have townshipwide millages of road. Ipsalian Township, Celine Township, Freedom Township, Manchester Township. And I think two of your neighbors to the north, Green Oak and Hamburg, have passed millages, local millages for roads, for local road improvements. I think they may actually be spending some of the money on primary roads, but a lot of it's on local roads. The third one down at the bottom is special assessment districts. I'll first cover the second part, neighborhood to neighborhood. That's how I'd recommend you do your subdivision roads. The neighbors, a local subdivision road's generally used by the neighbors. So have the neighbors, when they're ready to do a subdivision, have the road approved, do a special assessment district. You'll see that we have a slide in the back here. Probably about eight townships have gone that route. And that's the only way you're ever going to afford to take care of the subdivision roads, is the people are just going to have to pay for it. Some township put a little bit of incentive in there, like a hundred dollars a lot, or fifty thousand dollars for the whole project, depending on, you know, what each township does. But that's about, really the only way you're going to fund it without some type of millage. The other one is a township-wide special assessment district, which I have more information on. That's where everyone in the township pays a certain amount, a hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars per parcel. That generates money, and then you develop a plan for, for the most part, it's probably going to fix your local gravel roads, is what I would recommend. Because that's still not going to be enough money to fix your paved subdivision roads, in my mind. And Siao Township, did the, Siao Township is actually doing the township-wide SAD and the neighborhood to neighborhood. Townshipwide SAD is probably about six townships in the state have gone that way. As far as the townshipwide millage, I mean, there's some counties, Alleghan County, of the twenty townships, nineteen have millages, and one has a casino. So they all, all the townships in that county have money generating things, so. Next slide is township contribution summary. We just go back the last five years, I mean, we have the data going back for a long time. So they vary from, you know, ninety to seventy dollars per capita. Right now, Northfield Township's down at, what, ten, ten dollars and eight, nine cents per capita, which is the, one of the lower ends. And I realize money's tight, but end of the day, ten, eleven dollars per capita is really, you have a lot of miles of road, too, which, you know, also impacts how much you can get done. The next one, I've almost spent a lot of time on, this is just a table. If you were trying to figure out a way to pave, take care of your paved subdivision roads, how much would it cost? If you come across a Northfield Township, I thought, look at this, it's nearly about one point six, and this is actually information about two years old, so it's probably over two million dollars. Someone said, how much would it cost to improve all your local subdivision roads? Probably two to two and a half million dollars. But I'd say, I would recommend you doing that. The next one, though, is summary of gravel roads. Like I said, so many of your local gravel roads, really, there's hardly any gravel. It's really difficult for our crews to maintain them, because there's nothing really there to grade. Ideally, a road should be like a roof with crown, get the water off. But what happens over time, the road gets flatter and flatter and flatter, and then we, the road's actually lower than the sides. So that's why sometimes we need to put eight inches to get the road back up to where it was. Because obviously, the gravel gets blown away, washed away, tracked away, wears out. So that's what you just need, so trying to build that back, put that crown so the water can get off the road, it's no different than your roof. Also, we recommend clearing the canopy, because basically the tree canopy holds that moisture in. If you open up the canopy, let the sunlight in, it's no different. If you replace the roof on your house, I guarantee the roofer's going to say, you know those trees that are overhanging your roof? Open that up, let the sunlight in, because your roof's going to last a lot longer, same thing with the roads. So, on this one, gravel road needs, Northfield Township, you have forty-five, you can see you have, you know, on the higher end, as far as miles of local gravel roads, it's nearly a hundred thousand dollars a mile, so it's, you know, so you had to check how much would it cost to improve all your local gravel roads? About four million dollars, a little over four million dollars. I realize you don't have four million dollars. Celine Township didn't have, where is Celine Township on here? They didn't have two and a half million dollars eight years ago, but they did one mill, one mill generated in that township about a hundred thousand dollars. It'd been eight years putting a hundred thousand dollars, but it's a little bit of general fund money. And actually, now their roads are actually, have turned the corner, and actually have been, are improved. So you're not going to get there in one year, but you're going to have to, we're going to figure out a solution together to get there, hopefully five years from now, ten years from now. Next slide talks about, you know, that talked about this township-wide special assessment district. Northfield Township, the parcels I had in two thousand and thirteen is forty-six hundred. One township said that number was not accurate, I got this from the county, and I guess there was some other, but let's say it's four thousand, forty-six hundred. So if you do a hundred parcel, a hundred dollars a parcel per year, as we're talking, it generates four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If you did that for ten years, you'd have that four point six million dollars. So people say, we're never going to get there. Well, you actually, you could get there, if people decide, is it worth, and that's a decision, people have to decide, is it worth paying a hundred dollars more? Work out a plan, people realize what they're getting with that plan, that's what we did with the county plan. We told people what they're voting on, it's not just money going to the general fund, it's going to these projects, same thing we could do with the township. It's going to go in these roads, these local gravel roads, each year, that's what Siao did, we developed the plan. They decided, they did a ten-year millage, but they decided to do all their work in the first four years, they advanced some of the money. But the other way you can do it is do it like the Celine Township, do it over eight years, do it over ten years. So it is possible. Then the last one is the millage. If Northfield Township, tax will value is three hundred and forty. If you, if you, if Northfield Township, taxable value is three hundred and forty, three hundred and forty-three million dollars, and I guess you say, well, we really not, but look at Celine Township, you're three and a half times the taxable value of Celine Township, and, you know, they figured out a way to get there. But one mil would generate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Personally, I like the special assessment district, because then when you meet with people, you tell them a hundred dollars, they understand a hundred dollars. You tell them one mil, or half a mil, or blah, 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 people are like, what's my taxable value? What's this, what's that? And each person, the other thing is, if farmers, that was the concern in some areas, the farmers only pay, if they have three hundred acres, they're not being assessed, because generally if they have three hundred acres, they're not using the road any more than the person that has a half an acre. So each parcel's being taxed the same amount, so you argue it that way. I've heard arguments, it's like, well, are you taxing the businesses fairly? Because they're only paying from one parcel, and are they using the roads more? But for the most part, the businesses are generally on the primary roads, this is generally going to be worked for your local roads, so you don't have that many industry on your local roads. I'm sure there's a few exceptions anywhere, but I'm just saying, so. That's what, threw a lot of information, like I said, we're meeting with all twenty townships, trying to educate them, and, you know, if you're not the only one that feels the same challenge, Pittsfield Township has, well, I forget the miles, nearly ninety miles of local subdivision roads that are now twenty-five years old. So their number's like twelve million dollars, they need to figure out how they're going to find like twelve million dollars to take care, they got more paved roads, but that's their challenge, but you guys have a lot of local gravel roads. So, with that, you here to answer any questions the board may have?
Ms. Otto, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I think it was two to three years ago that Wildwood Homeowners Association, Dan, am I correct? That we had a public hearing.
We did one with Leland Acres, I know that.
We also did one with Wildwood and the other HOAs. With the two there, I don't know if we included Pine, that Pine subdivision or not, but it was a, a special assessment district for each of those, the homeowners association, and it did not pass.
Yeah, I mean, people, we, we run a lot of these.
We did try it, it's not that we can't, we can't try it again, but we did try it once.
Right. Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, when we start these, people, I mean, we had one in Dexter Township on, what was this, seven? Anyways, you know, we met with them probably three or four years before they finally said, we got to figure out a way. And it is harder in the rural areas, because they're larger lots, so there's a lot of roads, but there's less, you know, it's easier, you know, the homes are closer together, so you know, paying for, you know, the hundred foot out in front, a larger lot means there's more road, but there's less people to pay for it. So that's where it becomes sort of a challenge, the balance, but, you know, people hope someone else is going to take care of it, but who's someone else? There's really no someone else wanting to take care of the local subdivision roads.
Yeah, more scary comments from me. It sounds like a good tax salesman's pitch. I mean, the last few pages are all about ways to, we can try to get more money out of our, I, I, taxpayers here. I would like to change this from a, a pitch to try to get more money out of the taxpayers to maybe a pitch to talk to our state and our county and get more money from them, whom already took the money from us in the first place. I mean, like I just mentioned earlier, the hundred and fifty K, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars used to help promote and encourage illegal immigrants to circumvent federal law, a hundred and fifty K would do a few miles of some of our roads or any other township road. I mean, it's just a little bit, but that's just one small thing of how much money, how much taxpayer money is getting wasted. Instead of continuing going to the taxpayer, the homeowners, and trying to get more money out of them, we need to go back to the county and to the state or the federal and say, hey, look, give us back the money so we can use on our infrastructure, on our, in our neighborhoods, and for our needs, not wasting it on your interests and your special interests and your little feel-good projects of one kind or another. That's just, just a comment.
I mean, that's one option, but.
That is a comment, but thank you for the presentation. Thank you. It's Roy, right?
Yep.
Thank you, Roy. Mr. Dacken.
And I have a comment. People say, where's all the money go? Well, all the money goes for all these people sitting there to work for the road commission, you know, and, and for their big building out there, on, they're building a brand new one on North Territorial, and that is where all the money goes, you know, this, we get a smart guy like this comes in here and tells us this, 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 and this. It's, it's, it's pretty pitiful, the money that they waste, and I go along with it. Why don't they just give us the money they collect for the gas, for every gallon of gas? Give it to us, we'll do a hell of a lot better than the county will do with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dacken. Okay, Ms. Elneck.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. If you go to, I think it's page?
Five?
That's the schedule that it's the township cost? And then the, so last year, we spent a hundred and seven thousand, thereabouts?
Correct.
So how does that correlate with the matching of the thirty-five thousand that we're going to get this year, or the twenty-five thousand that we got last year?
Under, I guess, the columns to the left there says WSAAC costs, you can see, let's say, I'll start at the bottom, limestone, townshipwide limestone, use some of our matching dollars, twenty-five thousand, the matching dollars to go towards that, so you put, we put twenty-five thousand, you put in sixty-four thousand, we had nearly ninety thousand of limestone improvements. Same thing with townshipwide ditching, use some of the matching dollars, the fifty-seven hundred of ours, plus your fourteen, seven. So that's how.
So even though you're saying that we get potentially thirty-five thousand this year, there is more available, if we match?
Well, it's thirty-five thousand for the road, plus, what did I say, fourteen thousand, a little less than fourteen for the drainage, right? Those two combined is what's available for Northfield Township.
Yeah, so what we did on the previous board is, even though there was a, a match, if we wanted to do a project, we had to come up with the, the money from the general fund to, to meet that. So that hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three, thirty-six came from the general fund.
Correct, yes. But it, it appears that the road commission is matching more than the twenty-five thousand that they had indicated, and potentially the thirty-five thousand this year.
Oh, I think they do.
That's all. So there's, so all I'm saying is, like, we came up with a hundred and seven, but they came up with four hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Yeah, but I think, don't you get those from other, when other funding comes up and everything?
Right. Included in there is a routine grading and maintenance, and winter maintenance and those activities. That's what I'm saying. If you add that up, we spent four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars on the local roads in your township, and we received, what did I say, forty times, we received a hundred thousand dollars, and we spent nearly five hundred thousand, so.
So, if I go through there, the dust control, that was basically the two applications?
Correct.
Okay. And then the ditching, how is that determined?
I think we worked with your previous township manager, I don't know, Mike, is that?
Yeah, to determine which, and the board to determine which roads we would work on.
Right. So sometimes roads have, sometimes we work directly with the supervisor, sometimes they have road subcommittees, sometimes they have a manager. So whoever's designated, our foreman would work with that person or that group and say, okay, these are the priorities, this is what we'd like to see, you know, addressed.
This board decided. This board decided, though, not the township manager.
Okay, but, so, I didn't see anything in, in the projects that just said, you know, ditching only. So is that like a, I mean, it says ditching and limestone.
Some of the projects included drainage work and ditching.
Right, right, right. So, I mean, is it combined then?
In some of the projects.
I mean, all the projects presented were ditching, limestone, the whole complete. So, I mean, is it possible that you come forward and say, you know, this area just needs to be ditched?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but this is, let's say, a section of Kearney Road, and that, you know, and you want to just do drainage work, yeah, we can just work up a drainage, let's just do drainage, and some townships, Augusta's one, they'll do the drainage work on the road one year, then follow it up with a stone the next year.
Okay, I mean, so last year, did the township do a major road improvement for the dirt roads? Was there?
Just a lot of spot applications, I think, that's what.
So you did, so.
No, the focus was all on dirt roads last year. The focus in two thousand and sixteen was all on dirt roads.
Right, yeah, but my question is, like, this year, we're getting, you know, you gave us a list of projects, but it does, and my question is, was last year, was there a project road done, like a mile road here?
No.
Okay.
Townshipwide, they did a lot of spot locations. And we can still, we could do the spot locations again this year, if that's what the board decides, like, okay, let's spend, you give us a dollar budget, we want to spend ten dollars, or, you know?
And so how do we get, or how do we determine the spot locations?
Well, that's where we'd work with the township board or a designee. You tell us how, who that person is, or who that group is, and, or you put the list in, you know? Like I said, we work a lot of different ways with, different townships do it, you know, it's twenty townships, so, I don't think we have twenty different ways, but there's probably five to six different ways of townships.
And, and do we think in general that the two applications of brine is sufficient?
Most townships do three.
Okay.
But.
And do we?
Because you will get one more grading when you do three. I mean, every time we're, you're paying for the material, we're doing the grading, putting down, but the challenge is, it's tougher when some of your roads don't have any gravel to work with, so.
It just gets soupy.
It depends on how you do it. If you do it right with the rainstorm, it can get, so basically, you're saying that the dust control is about thirty thousand an application, thereabouts?
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, yeah, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred, correct, for two applica, solid application.
All right, and now, is brine the best?
Brine is sixteen cents per gallon. Calcium chloride, it's a better product, it's about sixty cents per gallon. So, no, we used to offer both, but for the most part, township stopped buying calcium chloride, so we's no longer stockage, it's, it's so, and is it really three times or four times as good? We don't think so.
Okay, so brine's the option, so.
Right.
You had indicated that most of our roads don't have a lot of limestone, so the brining may not be as good or work, so I was wondering if there was another material that would be a little better, just on plain dirt roads.
Well, the calcium chloride is a better material, but.
Not that much better.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking, yeah, yeah.
We have not.
You'd spend a hundred and some thousand, a hundred, if you multiply that by three or four, basically a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for your dust control.
I don't remember last time we used brine.
Ms. Otto, continue.
I know on, just to answer their, their questions, you know, how do you go past the two applications if the township doesn't do it? Two ways, I think, one, the, the group can come to the township board and ask for it, or, or you pay for it. And I know on Six Mile Road, over by Shadowwood Farm, several people over there paid for it, paid for the brine to go down on the road, because they were tired of, you know, because we get a lot of dust. So all those people along that one edge of Six Mile Road paid for it.
It's best if it's dry when we do it, not rain. If you get rain, it does no good.
But I do know, and I, I just want to make one comment, is that in Six Mile Road, when we had huge, huge, huge potholes, where the county truck got stuck in it once, you guys did come out the next following year and put limestone in that road and everything, and the road is good, the only problem that we have is, is still the grading. And it's not any different than any other dirt road that we have, but it, as long as we can get these roads with limestone in them, the roads will last longer.
Yep, I mean, we used to have natural aggregate gravel, and, but we pretty much, most townships all use limestone. There's a few western ones that are close to the gravel pits, and they have sandy subbays you can use, get away with, what we call it, twenty-two A natural aggregate, but most all the townships use limestone, because it does perform better in the long run.
Ms. Chick.
This is different from the conversation right now, but it does have to do with Six Mile, maybe Mike can answer this. Is the county, are you, the Washington County Road Commission aware that there's a ten-ton limit on Six Mile where the Oliver drain is?
Yeah, we, that was our response, we are inspecting all the culverts countywide, that one was inspected. We are working with the township, we met with Water Resource Commissioner's office, and I think they're going to bring something back at your next board meeting, resolution. If that is approved, we'd pay one-third, you would pay one-third, and the county a large would pay one-third. If it goes through us, the road commission, we, this year, we're already, we're already maxed out, and we're doing like twenty other culverts countywide, different likes, Salem Township has three culverts. With us, it's fifty-fifty, we put up fifty percent, you guys have put up fifty percent. So from the township standpoint, you're better off to go with the Water Resource Commissioner, because it is a county drain, it's part of the Horseshoe Drain. They, they're willing to do the project, we had a meeting with Evan Pratt, the county, I call it Drain Commissioner, but the Water Resource Commissioner's office, a couple weeks ago, they're willing to do the project, so that, and they're willing to finance it, help if need be, because it is, yeah, that is a concern, it's a safety concern. Here again, we're inspecting these culverts and trying to get ahead of it proactive, so we can tell the township, today it's posted at fifty tons, five years, it's probably going to be at thirty. Eventually, you're going to have to replace those culverts on those local roads. This one, that's why I said, we did these inspections, we have probably like thirty in need, and we're doing about twenty of them this year, trying to get them replaced and programmed in to get culverts. We, a lot of them are closed, luckily, I wouldn't say it's open, but ten tons does restrict public safety, and I can understand the fire chief and emergency services, school buses, all that.
Yeah, I had another meeting with Evan Pratt on Thursday, and, and they're attempting to expedite it and potentially get it done before Six Mile closes in June. So that would be amazing if, if we could do it, but they, they're moving on it, and so we need to get our resolution in support of that, so that we can get it done quickly. But it's, it's moving along.
We have two other projects, nearly three, with Evan's office, joint projects, one's in Augusta Township, one's in Freedom and Bridgewater Township, where he's taking the lead, so help, split that up three ways rather than just two ways. It's, first, it's got to be a county drain to make that happen, and they have, they have it willing to step up, and Evan's done a great job, he's willing to, previous Drain Commissioner said it'd be a hundred percent us, so we really, they weren't willing to share, so this way, at least it helps reduce the burden on the township, and they're willing to finance it at pretty low interest rates if necessary, so.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear you.
Evan Pratt's office, Drain Office, or Water Resource Commissioner's office, they're willing to work with the townships, like I said, and we've, we're doing one right now in Augusta Township on Button Road, and also on Bemis Road in Bridgewater, and Freedom Township, where it's a joint effort, one-third, 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 which saves the township some money, and they're willing to finance it over, so let's say you can't pay your one-third in one year, they're willing to have you pay it over two years at pretty low interest rates, so it's a benefit that the county's offering, so, you know, obviously, I think that'll be, like I said, on your May ninth agenda, but I would strongly encourage, understand it first, but if you understand it, support it.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, it sounds as though you are flexible as to like, if, how, how much we want to allocate towards some road improvements or work that we may need, that you're somewhat flexible as to what we can do and where. I do gather that from.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, you're spending a hundred thousand, pick one mile of road, because basically, that's one mile, then you're not doing the other forty-some miles of road. I would recommend, in this case, try to pick, you know, you know, a few roads, five roads, or whatever roads, and try to get some spots. I mean, you're not going to fix, you know, the whole road, but at least you can say, do a section here, a section here, you know, spread the wealth a little bit, rather than, because you pick one road, it's tough. I mean, if you can do the joint roads, like, probably three years ago, you guys did Dixboro with Salem Township, that helps, because you share the cost with it, split the cost. Same thing with Joy, you might not be there yet, but eventually, that's a way you can, you know, you can do basically two miles, and you know, you only pay for one mile, or you, you know, do a mile, you only pay for a half a mile, type way, and that's, you know, another way, if you figure out a way to partner with your townships. And thankfully, both, you know, Salem Township and, and Oliver Township are willing to partner, just when you're going to have the resources, I think they, you know.
Well, thanks again.
I wanted to make one more.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to make one more statement, and this is because being on the board for five years and working with the county road commission, and really, the problem of our roads is not a county problem. This is all a trickle-down effect. It's a state problem. And when the counties don't get enough money to fund what they need in their county, then it comes to the township. And the township's been burdened with this because the county has been burdened with this. And really, it's at a state level to where we have to ask the state, what are you doing with the money? And how are you allocating it? And why aren't we getting enough? And it isn't only our township, it's every township in Michigan that has this problem.
Can I ask about the Drain Commission? Maybe he can help me. The Drain Commission, are they involved with this?
On the Six Mile Road Culvert, potentially, if you guys requested their involvement, right now, they're not, but that's what the question is. They're willing to step in and help split the costs by three ways rather than 50/50.
Well, I've been in drain districts, and generally, there's a certain amount of property or houses that are in this, in the drain district. And when they, when they have to repair the drain, that you have to pay that money back, the taxes go up for a few years till you build it back up again. Is, I'm not, I'm just asking, do they have a drain district for...
Yeah, that's part of the Horseshoe Drain, so there's a drain district, but I think what they're proposing...
But the people don't pay anything that's on...
One option that Evan's office has is if the township and the road commission and the county agree, split three ways, one-third, 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 then there would not be an assessment on the residents. Obviously, if the township says, no, we want to put an assessment on the residents, that is an option too, but go ahead. You talked to him more recently than I have.
I did, I spoke with him, and I wanted him to give us two options. One option being the three-way split, the Drain Commission, the Road Commission, and us. The other option is a four-way split, where it would be the property owners in that drainage district, the township, the road commission, and the Drain Commission. Now, we wouldn't be taking in as much money from the Road Commission and the Drain Commission if we did it that way, but I wanted both options so that we could look at both options and pass...
It's already set up through the county. I mean, it's already set, let's use it.
So, we'll take a look at that, but we'll have both options next, next time.
It makes sense not to use it.
So, that's one. I have a couple of last quick questions, hopefully quick, and this doesn't have to do with roads because we have a lot of work to do to figure out what we're going to end up improving. But I've been asked about a pedestrian crossway at our North Village, like on Main Street, and since Main Street is a primary road, is that something that the road commission would provide? Because we're trying to cross from where the post office is over to where the beach area is.
We could build it and construct it, but we'd ask the township to pay for that. So, in Pittsfield Township, Absalane Township, where we put those in, we do, the township ends up paying for those. We do allow them when to install them. Sometimes, school districts have paid for them, improved them, but that would be something we look at the township or other, it's the other entities that might be interested.
Okay, and what do they run, do you know?
Millions.
No.
It varies depending on, you know, 10,000, I mean, depends on, you know, you, it's called rapid flash and beacons, that, you know, those are going to be 20,000 to 30. You get down to this across walking signs, you know, I mean, we just, County Parks was just, we did, we did an estimate for them, it was 13,000 at Sharon Mills, and...
Are you talking about elevated? If you're talking about elevated, why is...
Stripping, striping on the road and some warning kind of lights. All right, we just wondered...
The last ones cost us $11,000. We just paid 22,000 for the two at the school.
All right, have, do we have our questions answered here from the road commission?
I have a...
Go ahead.
So, where do we get the, you have the list of like where we pick the spots, the spot list where we think we improve it, or is that something that we kind of come up with?
You can work with Mike, or if you have a designee, or, you know...
I worked with Bill Wagner, my manager.
Okay. And then I have just a general like grading question. So, I happen to live on Six Mile, and why is it that sometimes like after grading, the same spots seem to wear real quick? Is that the spot fixing that needs to be done?
Probably there's subsoil issues, there's drainage. In Michigan, we got various soils out there, so I don't know exactly what you're talking about between, with end of pavement to Naller?
No, no, actually, what I'm talking about is by Shadowwood, there's that big curve, so I'm thinking it is a drainage. And then there is the other one when you, so let me get my directions. So, let's say we're going west from Naller, and we're passing the Shadowwood subdivision, and you hit that big curve. So, I would say within, you know, depending on the weather, but within a couple of weeks, we always get those nice big potholes, and the right side becomes undrivable, so sometimes I just...
Exactly, and if you look out there, that road's sort of going through a little bit like a swamp. I mean, you dig down there, there's not really good, ideally, you want a sandy soil...
This is a high spot. This is probably the highest spot on that road, and it's around the curve.
And actually, there are springs in the high spot, because there's so many, the subsurface, ideally, you go down, you know, three feet and then build back up. A lot of times, we've just added stone on top, and we don't have, and that's why ideally, you have two-feet-deep ditches to drain your roads, but a lot of our ditches, so that's where, yeah, some areas, there's water underneath there, poor soils, and we grade it, and then you're right, that, always the end of the pavement, where the pavement ends, there's always going to be potholes because people, you know, coming off the pavement, entering the pavement. But sometimes, random spots, it just...
And...
When you go past the golf course, down a ways, there appears, because I've walked that area, there appears that there's big chunks of rock coming out of the ground. And, and they're not potholes, it's rock that you're hitting.
In some areas, I mean, yeah, I mean, on Naller, there's no, there's very little gravel, so these getting boulders pushing their way up.
That's what it is, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, that, there's no stone, the boulders are sort of working their way to the surface. A lot of times in the spring, you see the water start pushing up and easing, you know, this water, water pressure's coming up, and it's a crazy, it's a crazy thing, sometimes in the high spot on a hill, on a road, that's where the springs are and they're coming up. Doesn't make sense, but that's enough, it's enough roads that, yeah, that's...
And then I have, one of our residents, Ms. Nichols, had some questions. Were all your questions answered? Or do you have any remaining ones that were not answered?
I can meet with her in the lobby if you'd like.
Yeah, that, sure. And then it could be real personalized. That would be fine. And so, I would like everyone to, if there are specific areas that you think need attention, you know, send the list to me, us at the, at the board, and we'll start compiling a list of areas that we can take a look at for your, for the spot fixing. And then we should consider trying to do something substantial. A hundred, 110,000 dollars is very little to do much with our roads, and, you know, there's a concern out there that we're not taking care of our rural areas like we should be. So, it's something I want the board to consider as we go into the next budget cycle, perhaps, seeing if we can do a little better than that. Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
Just have a quick, when do we need to make a decision so that you can get all this stuff done?
We need to do this...
By May 19th?
May 19th.
So, probably your next, I don't know how many board meetings you have in May.
One.
Oh, just one.
One before May 19th, so I'll get with Chief Wagner too, because he's going to know where the trucks are, you know, the emergency vehicles are having the most difficulty too, but, and then I've been offered a ride around the township by Mr. Masti here, and I have a couple of places I'd like to show you too, so...
Sure.
So, we'll do that in the, in the...
I'll go for the ride if I'm around.
Yeah, okay.
Because I actually drove many of the project roads that you had in there. I don't know, I didn't find them as bad as some of the other roads I take. It's just, maybe it's a good thing I'm not on the road commission, so I might have to drive around and figure it out, so I went through most of those.
And conditions change. Today, they're like, oh, not too bad, but next week, I, you know, that's the thing with gravel roads, they're ever-changing.
Okay.
Yep, anyway.
Well, thank you. We'll try to come up with a good project, and we'll take it up again at our May 9th meeting, so we don't have much time to make a decision. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Feel free to go out in the lobby and get, or you can call them. Oh, you want to ask us to them? You want to ask them?
Well, then we should bring them back in.
Well, let's, okay.
Bring them back, bring them back.
Get, Roy? Somebody catch him. Roy, you're being called back in. We have one of our residents who has a couple of questions that he didn't get answered, I guess. Go ahead, sir, come on up to the microphone. Oh, come up to the microphone. Talk in the microphone.
What size is the tank for the chloride?
You mean, on our trucks?
Yep.
We have different sized, we have different sized tankers. I think we have an 8,000 and 3,000 gallon tanker.
Okay. And that's just for my own information for the future. So, the weight limit on culverts over streams goes down over time. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, as it gets structurally less stable, it's going to be less.
It doesn't go up?
Right, it starts out at max, unposted means anyone can go over any size, then it's going to continue, just like a bridge or anything, it's going to continue to deteriorate, and as it deteriorates, it's like, is it rust through, it's like, it's a beam, let's say it was a beam. First, it's 100 percent there, then you're 90 percent of the beam's there, the next thing is 20 percent, you know, when you're 20 percent of the beam, it's not as strong as when it was 100 percent, so...
So, that you don't ever see the weight limit, it be able to handle more over time?
No.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you, that's all I have.
Is that it? Okay, is there, sir, do you have any more?
I do.
Okay, come on up to the microphone, please.
Please state your name and...
Scott Brown, 70, $24 Naller Road. I live at the same residence as Polly, she's my wife. Polly just asked you about the weight increase, and you said it does not go up, and yet, last summer...
I need to speak into that.
Last summer, the weight increased on Naller Road. There was never, there was always weight limits, and now it's unlimited on Naller Road, and it says so. The signs say that big trucks can go down Naller. Last summer, you came down Naller Road and you scraped it. You scraped it and you hauled all the gravel and dirt away, truck after truck after truck, and I came and asked your foreman, I said, what are you doing? He said, we're taking this dirt. I said, you're taking my dirt off my road, what are you doing with it? He said, well, I don't know what they do with it. I followed them, they took it to a private residence's house and dumped it all at their house. Then after I complained, they said, oh, do you want some? I didn't take any because I was already upset, okay? Now, you're telling me that it has to be built up again. You took it down four to six inches last summer. My cliffs from the road to my house are over a foot tall now. I can't mow on the edges of that. I keep taking my tractor and cutting my driveway out so I don't have to go over a bump to get into my yard. Also, we asked about the spraying of the road. Last summer on Naller Road, we're north of North Territorial, the dust got bad, real bad. We called and we offered to pay for it ourselves. Please, put it on our road. Every time it's done on Naller Road, it's done the day before it rains. It's a waste of money. It really is. So, that was my big thing. Why the weight increase on Naller Road? They haven't done any major improvements to it. They scraped it down, which makes less covering over the culverts, and yet the weight increased. That doesn't make sense to me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm sure Mr. Townsend will look into it, and that was just a culvert.
A lot of those weren't really questions, I don't believe.
No.
I mean, the Naller, I'm not sure what it was posted, what it changed to. So, I can get back with you, but I don't, I mean, you're asking me questions, really minute stuff, and as far as, we do remove berms, I'm not sure if that was what, but here again, it's a question on a project that I wasn't out there, I can't tell you exactly. We can try to get back with the township, but I can't tell you a specific on those details because I'm not, we have 1,500 miles of road, so I'm not on every mile and every project.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the road commission would be able to get you some answers on those things. It's better if it's specific, and it's, and they can go back and check things out rather than kind of, you know, at the meeting here where there's, there's no opportunity to get those who know about it to answer the question. So, I'm sure, you know, Mr. Townsend will be able to get you some information when he gets back to the office and can find out what happened.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we can move on to our agenda items. In your packet is a request to approve, approval to extend an offer of employment to Yvette Patrick for controller.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we extend an employment office to Yvette Patrick to work an average of 20 hours per week at the rate of $45 an hour.
Okay, I'll second that. So, we have a motion by Zelnok and support by Chalkley. Now, we can have discussion.
There needs to be a clarification because the memo says Yvette Davis, and her resume says Yvette Patrick.
There's an error in the memo. Her name is Patrick, as indicated on the...
So, we need to have that corrected?
Yes, we do. Another question?
I noticed that as well.
Okay, Yvette Patrick.
Mine's, mine's says Patrick.
Correct.
But the memo.
The memo is incorrect.
Oh, okay.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that? No? Okay, motion by Zelnok, support by Chalkley, and there's no more discussion? Can we have roll call vote, please?
Manley, yes. Chalkley?
Yes.
Zelena?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Great, passes.
Probably should say that I think...
We're desperate.
Well, we need someone, if I may add, and I should have probably added this at the discussion, my apologies, is that she, we told her we were going to bring it before the board, and she would give a two-week notice, so we're anticipating that she would start in May like 15th. That would be about the time.
I think also that it would be important, Lenore, to tell people that the exam that our CPA asked to take.
So, and part of the, thank you, again, in the discussion, part of the interview process after we interviewed them, if we felt they were qualified, what we did, there was like an eight, a question that the auditors put together, and so they answered that, and we would give that back to the auditor, and basically, the auditor would give us a thumb up or a thumb down, and he said her accounting skills, based on the little quiz that we gave, he thought they were going to be very good, that she knew her accounting.
I wish I would have asked for a date to be put in there that she's going to be hired.
Okay. Yeah, but we didn't put that in the motion, would we?
It was, I didn't hear it.
No, we didn't put it, it was in the memo.
I think we should.
Okay. Do you want to, can we go back and amend the motion?
Friendly amendment?
We can just stipulate that she plans to start May 15th. We could put that in, but as an additional motion, but it just depends on when she gives her notice and...
Yeah, she may actually be able to come a little earlier if she, you know...
ASAP.
Yep, that's what she, that's what we'll indicate, and she said she wanted to wait to make sure the board approved before she did anything.
So, because even though they put in a two-week notice, if her employer decides they don't want her to stay the full two weeks, she could be gone that day.
Right, yep.
Right, and we'll happily take her any day she can get to us. I think you'll enjoy, Ms. Patrick, she's delightful, so...
Oh, yeah, and the other thing, I, again, I did call her references, and they were all very positive. We did that, and we also have done the background check.
Okay, great. Next item is approval of township manager job description, and I'll make a motion to approve the township manager job description subject to review and approval by Labor Council since there will be... Okay, sorry. I will make a motion to approve the township manager job description, subject to review and approval by labor council.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chalkley and support by Otto. We have any discussion now. Ms. Belliger?
I'm not sure, but there may be some punctuation or spelling. On the very, a summary paragraph is in the middle of it, where it says, "Manager carries out such directive," is it, should be directives, possibly?
There?
The very first in the summary.
She just wants an S on directives.
Oh.
Does that sound appropriate, and on the backside, the word, the bullet that starts with the word, "Attend all meetings," after the words, "Operational issues," should the "of" be a two?
What was the last one?
The bullet that starts with, "Attend all meetings," it's about the middle way down. Attend all meetings of the Township Board of Trustees, provide key information related to the financial and operational issues to the discussion, as opposed to "of" the discussion?
No, I would say it would be "of," but that's just my, my thoughts of it, but it's semantics, so it, I'm sure it will be fine. Okay. Thank you for those corrections. Any other comments on, on the job description?
Madam Supervisor, yeah, I, one of the things I would like to put down as responsibilities is, like, to implement the master plan. You know, and that, it seems to be, you know, to do the development where it says in the master plan, as well as preservation. And I think that will be challenging for anybody who comes on board, is to really stick to the master plan. And I think, I would like them to know that that's really what the township has indicated they want.
That can fall under "Perform other duties," as assigned by the township board. So, really, the master, implementing the master plan is the township board's responsibility.
Well, I just think it's, you know, it will be challenging, and that any person should know that, that that's the intent, to me, of the board, and that it would be, I think, beneficial for anybody to know that that's the desire.
Ms. Chick?
I think it goes without saying, because the township manager can't do anything the board doesn't direct them to do, and because it's a board decision, he has to follow that.
Or she.
Well, you know, I know that when I get calls in, I know that we are following the master plan, and I've actually had quite a few conversations on the phone with people who are interested in properties in the township, and, and one of the first things, you know, I ask is, "What are you thinking you, you wanna do?" And then, I'll take a look at the zoning and the master plan, and, and I know them both very well, so then, we have a discussion. But the, the master plan is very important, it was very important to the public, and I think this board got that message in the election, and we're going to be following the master plan. Now, if you want to write something like in, in here, it's not, it's not necessary, but it could, you know, at least they wouldn't go out.
I think more, more could be better than less, and I don't see any, you know, any negative to not having it in there, so that the person knows that is his job.
Well, can you give us a bullet point, then, and we'll see about it. Implement the master plan.
Yep, implement the master plan for development and preservation.
Okay.
I don't think you need to put all the details of what the master plan is. If you're gonna put that in there, you just say, "They implement the master plan," whether it is preservation or non-preservation, or...
Development.
Or development or non-development, it's the master plan.
Works for me. Thanks.
Okay. All right, we'll add that in. So, I will remake my motion to adopt the township manager job description, subject to review and approval by labor council as amended. And I had support by Ms. Chick? Was that, okay. Some motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next item is Resolution seventeen five-five-seven, weed control SAD for Whitmore Lake. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution seventeen five-five-seven as presented. Mr. Docket? I gotta give a second. I support. Okay, thank you.
Did you get a second?
I did. Go ahead.
I do not like number five, I will not be supporting those. At number five, the town, now, first of all, this is for the lake, all the people that, all the people who live on the lake or has property in the area, they have to pay this bill, not us. We have to pay, 'cause we own a lot there now, unfortunately. But number five says, "The township hereby agrees to reimburse the county and DPW for all the expenses incurred in connection with the project, should the financing, implementation of the project not be completed for any reason." It's four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Why is our township going to be responsible for this? I, I just don't get it. Why, why should we take on this responsibility?
Do we have any more comments?
Could we get a legal opinion from...
We could strike that.
Well, I think we should.
I mean, would, I mean, do you think that's acceptable, or is that the township maybe has taken too much liability on such a, on page two?
Or at least be able to determine that we don't wanna pay it.
Right.
If it ever comes to, 'cause I think, I think I understand what they're saying, is that if, if something happens that they can't pay it, then it's up to the township to decide, are we gonna pay it or not, not gonna pay it, and...
Well, in my, in my opinion, I, I see no advantage of us agreeing to pay four hundred and fifty some. I mean, these are all people that are gonna benefit from this. We're not, anyone who doesn't live on the lake is not gonna, or will not benefit from it, in my opinion. Anyway, I, I don't like number five.
Ms. Chick?
I think the position of some of the residents that were here last time was that the, the residents around the lake are agreeing to take on this SAD, which would normally be a township expense, anyway. I'm not saying I disagree or agree with number five, but I think that's where the logic or the thinking comes from.
Why are we voting on it if, if, if we would do it anyway? No, I remember when they first started this, years ago, and the people on the lake are the ones that bring it to us. We don't do it. I mean, the township doesn't do it.
No, I know, I know.
Okay. Oh, I, maybe I misunderstood you.
Okay. I know that when they had the public hearing for another one of the lakes, when they're doing, where they're doing the same project, when the residents came, they felt that the businesses weren't paying enough, and the resi, and it was all redistributed. The cost to manage that lake was redistributed a bit, and the businesses were paying a little more, and the residents were paying a little less. So, it is possible during the public hearing process for there to be some change in the allotment of how it happens. Now, I, I have to say, I do agree with Mr. Docket, that number five is, number five is not necessary.
I might just strike it out.
I know, but, so... Anyway, I, they can always come back with it and say, "Well, you know, we're not gonna do it for you," but I don't think that's gonna be the case. There hasn't been a problem over the multiple years that this has been going on. They do manage to collect their money, and they do manage to have extra.
But we, but we never, we, we never agreed to this before.
I don't know if that was in prior resolutions or not.
I think we should strike it out, and if, if it passes without striking it out, they like it, fine, no problem.
Yeah, can we, can we strike that out? Here and now, or no?
It's our resolution.
It's our resolution.
Well, why don't we just get rid of that and...
Okay. I'm sure they'll come back if it's an issue. All right, I move to strike number five.
I support.
Okay, motion by Chalkley, support by Belliger. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I, yeah, I, I wanna vote for this, but can we, can we have a roll call?
Oh, we're gonna go, now, now that we struck that, now, we're gonna do a roll call vote for the remaining, remaining...
So, I just, we may...
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, okay.
So, ju...
Okay, I, I got it.
Okay, so now, we're gonna have a...
Can we still have discussion? I just...
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, I talked to Jeffrey a little bit today, just 'cause there's, there has been maybe a resident or two that wasn't so sure we needed it.
Right.
And so, there's two ways to do this, is Resolution one-eight-five, or Public Act one-eight-five, which is through the resolution. And that actually started, and I think Jeffrey went through this last time, but two thousand and three. And it's, that's when the resolution was done, and it went to two thousand and six. And then, they had another one, two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, and now, this, and then, they had another one, two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, and this is for two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two. So, this has been the process that has been used in the past, as opposed to Public Act one-eight-eight, which is where you would go to the residents and get maybe fifty-one percent, that would say they wanted the SAD district. So, this has been the process in the past since two thousand and three. And as Supervisor Chalkley said, is that there will be two public hearings, and the public, every person in the SAD will get a notification to come to the public hearing, and most likely, they will be presented here, or they'll have the meeting here. So, there is an opportunity, you know, if people, majority are for or against, can come to the public hearing. So, I felt more comfortable after talking and getting more details from Jeffrey this, today, about this resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Otto?
I do know that specifically for Horseshoe Lake, they have an annual weed control program that they do. Without it, they have issues. Even if they don't have growth in the lake currently, if you stop it at any one time, it starts faster than you can even imagine. So, if you don't keep it under control every single year, if you stop because you don't see weeds and everything, you don't see what's growing at the bottom of the, at the, at the ground level in the lake. It, it, it happens very fast, and especially if you have hot weather season and everything, those weeds can overtake the lake very rapidly.
And they do have a consultant that assesses the weeds, and so, if they can change the dosing, depending on what, what they're seeing, and where in the lake they're seeing it, and if we were to let it go, you know, without any control, and the weeds could get really bad again, then, then you'd be worse off than you were. So, anyway, and so, they, they don't assess any more than they need. Like, last time, they were less, and in fact, they've, they have extra, so they've been able to, to keep the costs down to the residents. Mr. Docket?
Can I just ask, Jackie, how, how come you, how come you mentioned Horseshoe?
Oh, 'cause that's one I know about.
Okay.
I know Horseshoe has a...
It's a private lake.
They do an annual maintenance on the lake, but that's a private lake.
Yeah, that's right, okay, so, let's not...
I mean, they pay for their own, but...
Okay, so I just don't wanna...
They do continue to do a maintenance program.
I just don't wanna get mixed up with Horseshoe Lake.
No, no. Okay. So, are we ready to vote now? Okay, so the motion was by Chalkley and support by Belliger to adopt the resolution as amended. Roll call vote, please.
We'll just throw it with number five.
As amended, without number five.
Okay, okay.
Manley, yes. Chalkley?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Belliger?
Yes.
Zelena?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes. Okay, next, we have independent contractor, part-time maintenance worker contract. Oh, yes. And we saw this at our last meeting, and I had it, was concerned that, we wanted to make sure that it really, truly was an independent contractor position, and not an employee, and yes, it is independent contractor, but I would like to change in the contract that you see, the actual, to the actual name of the company, and Mr. Seville's company is, I believe, Benchmark. I don't know what the last name of it is, Benchmark Landscaping? So, I would like that changed in the contract, but otherwise, it's, it is appropriate that it's an independent contractor position.
Are you saying you wanna remove Tim Seville, the word up on the, the name, up here, replace it with Benchmark?
Right, I would just like to put his, the name of his company in there instead. That's more appropriate for independent. I'm looking it up.
I think Benchmark Landscaping, we think.
We think it's Benchmark Landscaping, but we'll get that. Oh, Benchmark Outdoor Services, that's what it is.
Where's that at?
So, everywhere you see Tim Seville.
Where is it? Why does it say Benchmark?
Nope, we wanna change it to Benchmark Outdoor Services, instead of Tim Seville.
Okay.
Madam Supervisor, for me, in that case, the signature block should also be changed to be Benchmark, and underneath it, it should indicate who's signing and in what capacity they're signing.
Okay. So, by Tim Seville, it's, and then, he's probably an owner.
If it's an LLC, it would be its managing member. If it's a corporation, it would probably be its president.
Okay. It's just a one, one-man shop, I believe.
Probably an LLC.
Probably an LLC. We'll ask him and get it fixed.
All right.
Ms. Otto?
The only other thing that I'm recommending is that it just report to the Director of Public Safety.
Yes.
And that's on page one. Yes, I did talk, I did talk to Bill, 'cause it really is Bill that's hiring this person.
Yeah. It is. Okay, we'll, we'll make that correction. Yes, well, yep, number two.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Madam Supervisor, I, I don't mean to be difficult about this, but do, do we know what the entity is? I mean, if it's not an LLC, and it's not a corporation, it's not a anything. We wanna make sure that the corporation's getting signed with a legal entity.
So, we need to know what...
So, it would be Mr. Seville, who's a, who's, has a doing business as, but it would be him himself, or else, it would be an LLC, or it would be a corporation.
Okay.
We just wanna make sure that we have an actual legal entity that we're contracting with.
I could call him. We, we could, but...
Do we need to table it, or is this legal, need to be agreed to?
Yeah, if, if we're gonna approve the contract, we've gotta make sure that we're clear who we're contracting with. It's, it's integral to the contract. I don't think that there's a problem with, if Madam Supervisor wants to send a text and put it to the end of the agenda, and Mr. Seville maybe can respond by then, I think that would be appropriate. What, what's the name of it again? I can check.
Benchmark Outdoor Services.
Thank you.
I know Benchmark's not anywhere. I had people try to look it up on the internet, and there's nothing on, on the Benchmark.
But you're checking.
I know that for sure.
I'm gonna check right now.
Because, you know, I know that this is only being done, that we, we paid a lot of money to have the attorney do this. The only reason they did it is because they know I wanna get paid with a ten ninety-nine. And we spent all this money for this lawyer to make this up, and he's really not a consultant. He's a laborer. He's gonna work, but you are calling him a consultant. This is as phony as can, as you people are, whoever's doing this.
Mr. Docket?
It is phony. I mean, I, it's, you know, the guy is a laborer, he's gonna do some work for the township.
And he does a lot of...
I know why you're doing it. I think everybody should know why you're doing it.
Wonderful volunteering for the township.
If it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it is a duck.
That's, that's enough, okay.
I'm just telling you, you're being crooked here.
We'll get that corrected, and hopefully, have something by the end of the meeting. Okay, next item, our discussion items.
Crooked, crooked, crooked.
We have the Michigan, or the My Deal Extended Purchasing Program membership. Ms. Otto? We're gonna move on to the discussion of your My Deal, okay?
I mean, do we need to table it to the end of the meeting?
Yes, okay. Motion to table till the end of the meeting. Motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
What is this?
We're tabling this.
Oh, tabling.
Or, no, no, we're tab...
What, what, what are you tabling?
The contract.
Oh, the, the phony one, the phony one, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So, this came to my attention where I work at, it's called My Deal. And anybody who contracts with the state of Michigan is part of this. So, the company that I work for is a part of this, part of this organization, but the township would never use our company, because all we do is operations for Medicaid. So, so what this is, is, is that they open this up to townships, government, local governments, educational institutions, nonprofit organizations, nonprofit hospitals, to find... to find opportunities for saving money. So there is a, a fee for this, an annual fee, and it's based on population. And so for Whitmer Lake, we are, we would come under the, one of the lowest fees, I think it's $180 a year, to be a member of this. And we could get anywhere from vehicles, to computers, to tires, to gas, fuel, any green products, lawn service, janitorial supplies. I mean, it's endless what we could get here. When I seen all the, the vendors on the, on, that are part of this, there's a lot of them that we could take advantage of, only, not only with our administration, but with our fire department and with our police department. So I just brought this to the board as informational. It came across my desk, and I thought, wow, this would be a good opportunity for us to save money. $189 a year is not that much. It's, you know, it's almost like doing a Costco-type thing, and you'll probably save it in your first purchase.
Do you know how the year runs? Is it January to December, or?
I don't know that much, other than it's an annual. So it may run, if, it may run from the time you join to the time, 12 months from the time you join.
It does sound.
Ms. Bellinger, go ahead.
It does sound like a Costco-type thing. Does, do any local or small businesses benefit from this kind of thing? I'm a little concerned if it's coming through, somehow connected to the state of Michigan as well.
It is connected with the state of Michigan.
Yeah, that, that is concerning to me.
So you're capitalizing on all the contract, this is a volume-based contracts. You're capitalizing on all the contracts that they have with all the suppliers. So a lot of the, I mean, I can look it up real quick, but there are a lot of townships around our area that do use this. And I noticed that we don't. I looked to see if we were on the list, and we weren't, so.
So is there anything that shows like what the cost savings is, or what, what each of these things would cost to the township?
Well, I think it would depend on, because, I think you would do it like any other expenditure. You would have to get pricing. If you're buying a vehicle, you would have to get pricing to see how much that vehicle would be if you went out and purchased it yourself, versus if you went through the state and went through their contract.
So, because I've dealt with things through the state, do they tell you who you can purchase from?
They, they do have a list of what their contracts, who their contracts are with, so yes. And there, if you see in the pamphlet, it's down here in the corner of where the counties, cities, townships, and villages are populated, one to 10,000, so we would, it would be $180. We would be at the lowest scale.
Jackie, do you know, do they offer a list of the people that they contract with?
Yes.
Okay.
And they also offer the list of those who are members of this as well. So you know all the government entities, and all the townships, and all the hospitals, and everything that, that uses.
Have you talked to Chief Wagner about this?
No.
So I think he would be the biggest benefit.
Oh, I think he would, too. But I just thought, I, it came across my desk, the, what, on Wednesday of last week, and I said, Wednesday was the last time to get things and pack it, so I just said, Jennifer, get this in the packet, I think it would be a good opportunity for us to look at it.
She checked it a little bit, and like background checks and things, we would get for free, which we're paying, we're only paying $10 for the iCheck ones now, but we would have saved a little money recently on that. And I, there's energy purchasing on the back here, so we're going to call that number and see, because our electric and gas are needing to be renewed, so that could be a possibility, too, with this. So anyway, thank you for bringing it, and if you'd like to make a motion, that we go ahead and do that.
Oh, okay. I just thought if, what I wanted to do is just have it as a discussion, if people wanted to do more research, that we would just bring it to another board meeting. I didn't think it was an urgency that we do it.
We could do it, May 9th, then?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, May 9th. Next item, process criteria. Oh, I'm sorry. If, if we're going to vote on it on May 9th, I'd like to see the list of vendors and all the information so that we can decide if these are people we want to do business with. And I wonder what the, what is the state getting out of it?
Good question.
They're getting $180. That's what they get out of it.
Well, I wonder, what company says they deal with, if they get any kind of, unless they kick that out?
No, no, you're not allowed, actually, you're not allowed to get that. So I will tell you, when I was part of Life Secure, we always capitalized on Blue Cross and Blue Shield's contracts anywhere we could, because we could get a better rate, volume-based savings, doing it that way. When, when, especially through the state, there's a volume that they're negotiating, they, the higher the volume, the cheaper the rate, so, and they're just spreading the wealth. That's all they're doing.
Okay. All right, so can we move on to process criteria for selection of township manager? Ms. Otto brought us some materials.
But they, excuse, they would be checking these, these prices before they order it.
Oh, I think they should, yeah. So what I did is, we did have a email that was provided to us at the last meeting, and this was back in 2012. It was an email from Mike Magda. I think, Mr. Dockett, you supplied a copy of that to us. And this was just a point system that they used. They were identifying certain criteria that they were voting on. I'm not recommending this at all. I feel that this boy, this board is probably looking at different criteria and wanted to develop something on their own. What I provided is just a format. This isn't, I'm not recommending anything that's written on this, but this was just a format that we use to develop a point system. So, and then to determine whether we're going to move forward or not move forward. So I thought we could come up with a point system, we could come up with identifying what, if we're going to move this person along to another interview, that type of thing. Or we can come up with a totally different type of format. But I just wanted something to start with.
Ms., Ms. Chick?
So we are going to make, be making a decision fairly quickly. I would, not quickly, but we don't want to take too long, we could lose some of the candidates. And if, so are we going to work on another form to, to? I guess I'm wondering how long it's going to take to create another point system in order to apply it to the candidates that we have.
I don't know that we need a point system, but Ms. Bellinger?
We talked at the last meeting about the idea of you picking your top 10 that you find. You pick your top 10, and we go, all select perhaps our top 10, or 5, or whatever we come up with, meet here with our list, perhaps, and then see who out of that gets the largest numbers, and then go for the, maybe 6 out of the top 10, or 8, or pick a number out of that. How many do we want to interview then, or bring to an interview? Maybe want to bring 6, or 8, or 5, or 3, or whatever. But if we agree, if a lot, if like, a candidate, 5 of us like a candidate, that might be a lot of votes. And so it weeds out that, just like maybe my favorite one doesn't get only but one vote, so that one is out. It doesn't, doesn't find favor with the rest of the board. So that might be a good, simple way to go about it, to start.
You could also rank them, you know.
Well, that's what I was thinking as a rank. Really, when you score, you're ranking them.
Right, if, if you rank your top one as 1, and your second one is 2, you know, just 1 to 10, or whatever, and we just add them up, and the lowest scores would be the highest ranked.
But I think by the time we get to a point where we're actually interviewing them, we could come up with a, a format. I mean, because we're going to have to present this to the public. How did we pick this person? What was, what was the criteria that we chose to, to pick this person? It can't just be because you like them. There has to be some thought process, and I think that we owe the township and, and the voters our thought process in it. What is the criteria that we chose from it? You know, how did we score these people? How did we choose them? I think you need to come up with something.
We're supposed to be providing questions or information to Jennifer to put together, you know, ways to question the candidates, too. So she hasn't received anything yet, but hopefully soon. If you think of things you'd like to interview, for interview questions, Ms. Bellinger?
So if we did like, if each trustee brought in their top 5 or 10, or whatever, and then we, we, we come up with a number from there, then are you asking what criteria from that batch that we're going to as a group? Now, are we going to bring them in? I, I heard from somebody else that in the past, what was done was, Envy was set up, and we got to have discussion with them and ask questions. It don't have to be necessarily handwritten out already, ahead of time, per se.
Well, some questions you can ask, and some questions you can't, so.
Correct.
Yeah, you have to be very careful.
Right, and so we were going to kind of have consist, some consistency in the questioning. So that, that's something that a subset of us could take a look at, or Jennifer could take a look at ahead of the actual interview. And we'll have our labor attorney look at the questions to make sure they're appropriate ahead of the interview. But as far as choosing candidates go, and, and I honestly have not read all of these, all of these resumes yet, but some of us may be looking for something different in each candidate. Somebody might have a PhD, but that's not important if they don't have this other skill. So when I look at them, I, I'll, I'll be looking at them for the things I want to see in the person who sits in that office. So I may, I may choose a different 10, I may rank them differently.
And that's why I said the board has to come, I think the board has to come up with a criteria of what, you know, we may not all agree on everything, but there has to be something that, you know, we're looking at specific values and skills out of this person.
I kind of lean towards what Marlene was saying, though. I mean, we're all individuals, we're all fairly intelligent, and we can recognize, you know, good skills and qualities in the resumes that we're getting, and then do an interview process. But I think it's an individual process of picking people that we think would best fit, and then getting, again, those top 5 people, and then if, agreeing on top 5 people, and then going from there. But I, I think if, if we wait until we establish a criteria for us to choose who we want, like, I don't think, I don't, that's uncomfortable for me.
I think you could do the same, I think you could do it at the same time that you're doing this picking and choosing. I don't think that you have to wait. I, I, no, you don't have to wait until it's set. I think you can choose. I think you can choose your top 10. I think that you can go down to your top 5. But when it comes to the face-to-face interviews, I think that the board has to be very altogether on what are some of our key things that we're looking for. And then I'm sure that individually, we're looking at some other different things. But I think we owe it to the township, and actually, when somebody is getting interviewed and they want to know, how did you interview me? You just can't say, well, we asked you questions. There has to be some thought in it.
Ms. Manley?
I think for the initial, like, everybody, like Tom kind of said, you know, come up with your initial top 10. Because I have read all these, and I think there's going to be a lot of correlation. So I don't think at this stage, we need to say, we're looking for this, this, and this, because, you know, I think we all have the same type of person in mind. And again, looking at the resumes, I think narrowing it down is going to be, I think there's going to be a lot of correlation between us, so. I think at this point, we don't need to worry about that, but for, second option, definitely, for second.
Mr. Dockett?
I, how we did it, is we, we had, like, there was 7 people, like, there was here. We, we picked out, we picked out our 10 best. We got together, and we said, well, this person's on my list, and if 2, or 3, or 4 other ones have them on the list, it helps to, to say, oh, okay, well, let's, let's put them in the pile, you know? I mean, it makes you feel better than, than other people. So, but, but I just want to say, we, we've got to move quick. I, I'm surprised that we're not, all, they were all there on last Friday. We really got to get cracking on it. We need a special meeting to get this, get, get these initial ones done, because that's how we ended up with Holland Fink. I mean, after, after, when we went, we come back after 6 or 8 weeks, and start calling these people, they all had jobs. So we got to move on this.
Yeah, and I don't know if we need to wait until the next board meeting. I, I agree with Mr. Dockett, we need to have a special meeting just for this.
Right away. We already got them on.
We could certainly rank them quickly, I would think. Didn't we not get an email from Jennifer saying that she would like something by May 1st? That was potentially the date. You know, that would be what, next Monday? Next Monday? Okay, and she sent out our, she sent out the list of all the candidates?
Yeah, all we have to do is pick, each one of us have to pick, you know, whatever, 6 or 8 names off in there, get together and say, hey, yeah, these, these are our people. I mean, it's, it's not, I don't think it's that tough.
Okay.
It has to be open meeting.
It has to be open meeting, yes. Okay, Ms. Bellinger, last, last comment here.
So how, how would we, if we wanted to move this quicker and have a special meeting, how does that work? I'm just, I'm curious, I'm asking how, what would be the process, what happens with that? If we want to do a meeting like, you know, like next week, or, or a few days from now, or something? How does that process happen?
We could do a special meeting, go ahead.
Yeah, as I say, I guess, you know, we'll plan a special meeting, I'll send out an email, see what works for everybody. I mean, it should be a quick process, I would think. You know, have everybody bring in their list.
It should be able to get, if we have our list in a half hour, we can have the names. And we go, we go from there.
Right.
But we got to get moving.
And we'll have our labor attorney check the job description, too, before then. Okay, so I don't know what date we're looking at for that.
I will send you all an email tomorrow.
Okay. Ms. Zelina?
So, so is it that we're all going to, so what's going to be the process? We're all going to pick our top 10?
Top 10.
So can we not give that to Jennifer and have her compile and just put names spreadsheet? Here's the 10?
Well, we could even do that when we meet, too.
I only have 7, that's all I'm going to have.
Well, no, so whatever anybody has, so, I mean, we can do that. And then is the goal to interview 5?
Well, I guess we could determine that.
Well, we also might take a look at what kind of salary they're asking for. I mean, if some of them are, well, some of them wrote down.
So, so, and then we're going to see when we can meet for a special meeting? And then at the special meeting, it's to select the top 5?
I figure if we put in a price range, they have to know what we're looking at, even though they're asking for the moon, right?
So when do we want to get the information to, like, Jennifer?
She said May 1st, is that, that is Monday.
I mean, what's the date? Friday?
Friday.
Friday.
And then she, most likely, depending on what she's doing.
Yeah, because I've already had my, I reviewed mine.
She'll have it compiled by Monday.
Monday?
Then she'll have it compiled by Monday.
I mean, we can ask her, I mean, that we would like it compiled by Monday. I'm thinking, you know, do a spreadsheet, and then we get it, and then we'll know where, as Ms. Trustee Bellinger said, is where maybe there's correlations. And it might actually fall right naturally out.
Our supervisor has to be a speed reader.
Oh, I'll be fine.
I mean, I read them, I probably have, I have 3, but maybe there's, there's a few more that have come in that I need to pay more attention, so.
The la, the later ones, I hear, are much, much better than the earlier ones that came in.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we're going to potentially call a special meeting?
Yes, we'll schedule something for hopefully next week.
Right, and it'll be posted appropriately.
It'll be towards the end of the week, Tuesday is an election, so, I know it won't be Tuesday.
Yeah, not Tuesday.
Okay.
Don't, don't make it go at least at per 5.
Oh, I know.
Because I, I work the 5. Because I, I work the 5 and I know the rest is.
I know. Okay. Okay. So, are we good on that? All right. Next item of, oh, we need to release the attorney-client privileged letter that we have received.
Yeah, just read it.
Just go ahead and read it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it really, it's really long? No, it's not really long.
Maybe the middle paragraph.
Yeah.
The important part.
Yeah, that's what, oh, we were going to say too.
Okay, let, I need a motion, I move to, we, release the attorney-client privileged communication about the STD liquor license.
I'll support.
Okay. Motion by Choakley, support by Otto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Go ahead and read it if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the middle paragraph.
This is in regards to our last board meeting. We had a request for an STD license by Little Porky's and we had.
Packaged liquor.
Huh?
Tell people it's a packaged liquor.
Oh, it's a packaged liquor. I'm sorry. It's, the licenses for packaged liquor, SSD, SDD license is a liquor license, specially designated distributor liquor license. And they, at the meeting, we had 2 opposing views that approached the board. And at that time, we requested that our attorney review the, the regulations on it and, or the ruling on it. They did come back and say that the Michigan Administrative Rule R 436 dot 1133 provides in relevant part as follows, "An application for a new specially designated distributor license or for the transfer of a location of an existing special, specially designated distributor license shall not be approved by the commission if there is an existing specialty, specially designated distributor license located within 2,640 feet of the proposed site." So, I'm, I can say all the regulations. So, based on this, what they're saying is, is that, no, he can't have the, he can't have the liquor license. And I think the board just wanted a follow-up because we postponed it until this meeting to vote on it. And the answer is no, he can't have it. And Little Porky's did withdraw their request.
Okay. Thank you. Can we move on now to second call of the public? Okay, it's opportunity for second call to the public now. If anyone would like to come and speak to us, please feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and let us know what's on your mind. Anybody? Come on up.
My name is Bruce Bell. I live at 9028 Posey Drive. I was listening to, I think it's Roy.
Right. You could pull that out and hold it up to your mouth.
I was listening to Roy.
You might as well shut it off.
Hello?
I think it's on.
Is it on? Okay.
It's on.
And if I understood it correctly, he was saying it costs $30,000 per application of that Brian. Is, was that correct? 32,000? But he also was saying that it's not doing anything because we don't have limestone down. So, it would seem to me that it'd be a waste of money to do it. And that money could be applied somewhere else. And I just wanted to, to say that.
Thank you. Yeah? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Come on up.
Jerry Herman, 8365 Airheart Road. Just found some notes while the meeting was going on. Michigan pays 53% more per mile than the national average. It's the 5th highest gas tax in the country. In 2015, the state of Michigan said it needed $1.5 billion to fix the roads. The state legislator raised taxes to raise that much money. And last year, the county was here, said they needed another half mil to fix the roads. This year, they tell us they want to tax us again, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Board member comments? We can start with Ms. Belliger. Anything?
Well, I want to take Wayne's famous comment. Support local businesses. Please, support local businesses. I want to thank those for coming out tonight. I appreciated the, the Road Commission coming out and giving us some information and sharing us, enlightening us a little and maybe hopefully waking a few of us up to see if we can get more engaged in keeping a track of what happens to our tax dollars. Again, I want to thank my friend David for the cute dye. And again, thank you all for coming out. Have a wonderful week.
Mr. Docket, do you have anything?
Well, no, she stole my thunder. I would like to say that I, I, it just bugs me that, that we've had a discussion about the drain commission. Every person who lives in that drain commission, drain district, benefits from the fact that it keeps their property from flooding and they pay extra money for it to be in that district. The way it works is that, that money only goes up to a certain point. Then it's, then they do, the county does not check, tax them anymore unless it's used. So, on this drain that we're talking about needs to be fixed, these people should pay their 25%. I mean, and then they will, on next few years, a little bit at a time, it will build back up. I mean, the drain, the drain district's already done. Listen, I mean, it's not like we got to go out and start all over again. It's already there. So, it's very important that they pay their fair share for their drain as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, actually, we, we had tabled an item, but we didn't bring it back yet. Can I, is it too late to do that?
The meeting's.
We had tabled Mr., Mr. Seville's independent contractor contract.
Right, the, the meeting's still open.
It's still open, okay.
It's a board's pleasure to.
Okay.
Take it back up if they can certainly do so.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it back in time. But we do have an official name now. It is Benchmark Outdoor Services LLC, and he is the owner.
I did a search for Benchmark Outdoor on the.
It's not in the, the list yet?
It is not.
Okay, well, leave it tabled. Okay.
I did a search too.
Well, that wasn't my comment, but we'll go ahead. Ms. Zellner.
I'd just like, thank everybody for coming. But Madam Supervisor, could you expand a little bit about the comment on the drain that you mentioned that we might be able to get it done sooner? Because living on 6 Mile, and I don't know the effective way to do it, but occasionally I hear trucks come down. And not that I run out and, you know, pester them, I'm afraid I'll get run over, but on Friday, I, a double gravel hauler came down. All I got was 983 was the truck number, because I actually didn't have my phone that day. And it was a company in Oxford, Michigan, and I think it was TKMS. And they came down and drove down 6 Mile. They backed up down Naller and came back down 6 Mile to go back west. So, I did call the police department and let them know there was no one in the area to ticket them or watch them. And then on Monday morning, I was actually closer to home, so I didn't get it. And there was a, just a single gravel hauler with a blue-nosed truck that came down 6 Mile going west. Again, I called the police department to let them know. And I don't think they were able to catch them either. So, I know it's, is a concern and, I mean, our fire trucks can't go down, but these other trucks are. So, I'd like to just, if you could expand upon what you heard, because there has been a suggestion from the public that if it isn't going to be fixed soon, maybe we put up cameras so that we can start to ticket the people and make it known that this is serious.
I, I had a conversation with Evan Pratt on Thursday. And so, we're, we're talking about the safety concerns of this culvert caving in. And he, he said that.
Excuse me?
Okay.
So, we had, so we were talking about trying to get this expedited and he could potentially, and they've already started the process, even though we haven't done the resolution. They've started the process of design and they've started to contact contractors to do it. And there's a couple in the area, they're, they're getting a bid. And if they can get this moved quickly, then they would, you know, because the contractors are out there working with MDOT, you know, so they're just like right down the road. They're hoping to get them to do this very, very quickly and potentially before they close 6 Mile, the 6 Mile Bridge.
And that's in June, is it targeted?
They're intending, intending to close that mid-June. So, this has to move pretty quickly. But it, again, it's a, how complicated can it be? It's just a big culvert, you know. So, it's helpful that the Drain Commission is doing it because they can kind of bypass a lot of the MDEQ stuff. It's, it's better that they're doing it with us than just the Road Commission and us. So, they're, they're making an attempt to get this done quickly for us.
And then if it weren't to be mid-June, what's the next date again?
The, the next opportunity would be after it opens up again, and that would be in September.
Okay.
So, we'd rather get it done sooner than later. But it could be, it could be complicated because of the way the road, everything's being routed with the MDOT project. So, that's our hope though, is to get it done quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll just do my part now. The Downtown Strategic Action Plan is, has been a discussion of the Downtown Planning Group and the DDA. And we had our meeting last night to talk about that with Mr. Lippens. And I, we're, we're going to be having some focus groups and some workshops to talk about what we need to get to happen downtown to make it a more inviting place and to improve our commercial prospects down there. So, I have actually some, I guess you'd call these surveys on the kind of things we're looking for in some of these focus groups. And so, I, I brought a copy for each of the board members. But anybody out there who would like a copy, I'm happy to make, make one for you. And we'll encourage you to participate. You'll be able to go to the township's web, website, and it will list the events as they're going, as they're being planned for, planning for the downtown. And we want everybody to contribute their ideas and we're hoping to move forward and have a really exciting place down there in the future. And one, one thing, we started out with street trees. You know, it, potentially a volunteer project, but, but it would really help the look down there if we could have street trees. And so, we're hoping to do some memorial street trees. I need to get in touch with the Road Commission as far as finding spots in the sidewalks for those. But anyway, I'm excited about the group that's planning to work. There were 16 of us at the meeting last night, so. Anyway, I'll pass these out and please get them back to me. You got one already? Okay, great. Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay. Just a quick reminder, Tuesday, the 2nd, there is a small special election for Ann Arbor Schools. It's a military renewal, so if anybody is in the Ann Arbor School District, please get out and vote.
Can I ask a question on that? Do you have a little more information on what's on the ballot or details about the ballot?
Not offhand. I know it is online. I looked at it earlier. It's, I want to say it's a renewal for a sinking fund. And you can come to the clerk's office and get a ballot. Like I said, it's online through the county and on our website.
Okay. Ms. Otto?
I just wanted to let everyone know that May 13th, the Kiwanis Club of what I like is hosting a fundraiser for the 4th of July Parade. We're doing a golf outing and it will be at Rolling Meadows. Tea time is at 9 o'clock. And if anybody is interested in registering for it, we do have flyers downstairs here. There's also flyers at the store, the Kiwanis store, or you can contact me directly. We have been putting them out on Facebook as well. And looking forward to, to the 4th of July Parade. We have some great entertainment this year and, and I think everybody's going to be amazed at what the parade's going to bring this year.
Okay. Thanks. Ms. Check, do you have anything?
A couple of things. And one was just to comment on Lenore's comment about the vehicles on 6 Mile. I also saw garbage trucks on 6 Mile. I think it was Friday on the paved section, so you know they're coming in and out of there as well. Couple of things update. At the last meeting, I had in my report indicated that we were getting a proposal from our planner regarding the master plan costs. And he gave us a proposal of the scope of the project and the amount came to $29,000. The Planning Commission was not ready to make any kind of a decision. We were discussing options for either cost-cutting somewhere or limiting the scope of the review so that, and we'll, we'll be making a decision on that, I think, at our next Planning Commission meeting. Also, a question came up for the Planning Commission about whether or not we had recommended the synthesis plan for the Northfield Community Park and we had not. That was also a suggestion that the board had, have that plan presented to the board and the board would make the decision on accepting that or not as a plan. So, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. I move to adjourn. Okay, okay. Choakley, move to adjourn. Chick, support it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
What was the $29,000 for?
The master plan review.
For, for what? The North Village?
The, no, for the master plan, the 2000, we did, last master plan was done in 2012. This will be the 2017 review.
Okay, thank you.